Meeting to order, would you please stand and salute the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome to the meeting. The next thing on the agenda is approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion we approve the minutes as written for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So it's a motion by Chris, the second by Cat, to approve the minutes of June fifteenth, all those in favor. Thank you. Next there are department reports and Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. Don't have anything to report, just figured I'd make some other questions.
What's next on the agenda for paving, and I know they've been cutting pavement down on Maple Street and getting ready there, but is their street ready to go or not?
I'm waiting on the bids being July seventh.
Okay.
The old day bits, that will be the telltale.
Yeah.
How much, what we can do. Based on pricing, I've seen it as a little promising, but. We'll know once the bids roll in.
Sort of prices, price increases or other municipalities reporting. In terms of asphalt.
Hundred and five dollars a ton for liquid asphalt.
Versus last year same time?
Seventy-five dollars.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I had a.
It's like a forty percent increase.
Yeah, yeah, the paving bid that I put out had a. You know, eh, one point one million dollars, so. Set back and choose once we see the numbers.
Okay. Is it, is it possible that we could focus on, and maybe that this is just for this year? Dirt roads? Building the base on dirt roads, it doesn't involve.
I have a bid out for work on Cressy Road.
Okay.
But with the price of pavement. We'll be lucky to cover a couple of the roads that are. That are asphalt that are already.
Yeah.
Beyond, so.
I mean, Sanborn Road.
Yeah, yeah. Just have to see what the bids come in, have to see what the real numbers are. That was just a number thrown, you know, rough calculations. Let's see what the bids are. I'll be looking at. A lot of pavement preservation, cracks seal sealants type things to. Work on the roads that are, that are not beyond the point of that to try and get a few extra years out of them to, because we're just. Going to be up against it with the price, price is going to eventually come down some, but it's never going to get back to where it was.
No.
So we're just going to start working on pavement preservation and. You know, in order to do Cressy Road, I have to take money from the allocation this year for pavement to do Cressy, so. That, that's all has to play a bit as well, so. I think the gravel price for Cressy is going to be decent, but it's still going to be much higher than it would have been. Previously, so it's going to eat into it quite a bit.
You still have to burn diesel to get it there, right?
Correct, yeah, and labor. Yeah, easily, I'm anxious for the bids to come back and see what.
Did you get the specifications from the DOT person who was here three or four weeks ago, or three or four meetings ago?
Yep, yep, I had his spec. Compared it to a couple other pits and talked to them about the state spec and their spec. Been looking at the sheets and talking to people that have a lot more experience than I do about what will work, what won't work, so. We'll see who bids, what they're gonna, what they're bidding to put on the road and then make an determination from there.
And would your crew do the pavement preservation or?
No, I would be hiring somebody that requires specific equipment to apply it.
I have.
So, so I've asked for some quotes on about a dozen roads that are in varying stages of. You know, some of them paved only three or four years ago, some that are eight years old. To get an idea, so.
Ridge Road, right?
That's got a long crack in it that needs to get sealed or it's going to completely break up.
But it was, it was sealed, right, with a.
It was, it was the cracks that were existing, I don't know, six or seven years ago, whenever it was that Herb did the last seal job. That, that took care of that, but that part of the road's in pretty good shape, but the crack out in front of, oh, just beyond my house. Crack's probably thirty feet long and it's widened out. That's, that's the only one that I see really on the road that needs attention.
Yeah, I actually, we put some patch into that this week, it was either Monday, I think it was Monday, or maybe it was last Thursday. We did, I, we put some patch into it to try and keep some of the water out. That section is on the list. To get sealed, to have some, a little bit of ditching down there to try and get the water out of the road. And get it to sit over just a little more, but it's really flat right there. There's got to be a spring under the road.
Yeah, that's a wet spot, that's, it is.
So.
The only comment I would add is that. Board should keep in mind that the board's consensus on Cressy Road was that we were going to do what was necessary to not have it be a mud pit next year.
Me completely navigable.
Nobody losing their axles anymore.
I think the other takeaway I had from that was that the DOT fellows that were here said, you know, some roads aren't meant to be paved that. You know, depending on who looked at that for, for you and were going to make a suggestion about whether it was ever meant to be paved. Or that it would be better off using gravel there, I mean, so whatever they decided was the best thing in that area. So.
Did Peter come down and look at it?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
His consensus was with nothing left of the road. So either dig it down eighteen inches and pave it, or if they get down eighteen inches, get the junk out of it and put gravel. Either way, you're gonna spend a million dollars excavation and calling to get it to that point, so, or more. But yeah, so there was nothing left, so. Geo textiles are out of, out of the question due to the price to put down and then put the pavement down or pit the gravel down on it, so. Looking at a, right now I've been out for a six inch top coat, twenty feet wide with a four degree pitch center out. And the spec gravel, we're darn close to it, have it more compacted once it's got to the, been graded to the spec and. Then do something, grab out a ditching. See what happens, but. I could spend the entire paving budget that I was given just on Cressy and would only be half done, so. Yeah. Got my fingers crossed on what the bed price will be for some good gravel and getting it applied correctly. Or in the worst case scenario, having to call it myself and hire a good grader operator to, to get it pitched right.
Do you take care of the, like, Cobbsey Boat Launch or Cottelloggin Boat Launch?
Need the.
Well, I had a complaint about the parking. At the Cobbsey Boat Launch, that people just seem to park willy-nilly wherever they want, they don't. You know, trotters, what, damn boaters?
I've noticed, yes, it's our, it's our responsibility to take care of pavement there, so I've noticed the lines are faint. And I, I'd like to get them striped, but.
The lines are still noticeable.
Yeah, they're still noticeable.
Every day.
Yeah.
And one issue is compact cars are taking.
Oh.
Trailer spots, you know, and so you've got a little small car taking up an entire trailer. Boat trailer, truck or van spot, which causes issues.
Kayakers.
Yeah. They.
And the boat launch was very busy this weekend, almost all wrapped my house on the right side.
Wow.
It wouldn't be Public Works' responsibility to do anything about the parking anyway, it would be PD if there was a traffic impingement due to parking.
Just signs, I guess, you know, saying. I don't know, something to say.
I think there's a couple signs that say. Truck and trailer parking, and then the lower lot is, is more for people, just their vehicles. I believe there's a couple signs in place already, so. You know. I'd like to get the lines painted, but I don't, it won't, I don't think it'll happen this year, it's below on the list. I think I'll wait till there are a little more. I'll have to wait probably for next year, so. At this point, I'm on the waiting list for the sidewalks to be painted. So they got most of the line striping done, but the sidewalks, stop bars, they don't have enough staff to run the, the truck that does that, so they're. Doing that evenings after they do striping, so they're way behind and I'm on the list, but. So at this point, I'll be happy to get my sidewalks painted before school starts, and then we can maybe get some parking lots striped back.
And they used to do school crossings. I think you can still see some faintly.
Yeah, I have those, I've ordered those, the ones on Main Street, all the Main Street ones, the Academy Road for the school, all those, I've ordered them to be. For that, put that order in, just waiting on, I think company to have the staff and the time to, to get it. So they were able to get most of my center line works done on most of the roads, so.
Well, they used to do a. I can remember being awoken at night when the guys out right in front of the house, where they, the school. Sign was and. Now they had lights and were putting down their stencils and all that stuff and painting.
One, one more question, while we're on the topic of signs, you, you reminded me there were a couple of constituent requests on signs.
Yep.
One for like the Wilson Pond intersection with Old West and.
Yep, I have that sign on order.
Okay.
There is one there, but it's old, it's cracked, it's bent, so I just ordered it and do one.
Okay.
And we cleaned out the shrubbery on the Wilson Pond. Side of that road up to that intersection and also passed it and patched that corner yet again. So the only way to fix that corner is to excavate it out.
I agree.
Tire in there, so.
Yeah, that's a long term.
Yeah.
And the other one was like the S curve on May Cumber Road.
Yeah, I actually ended up, uh, double yellow lining that road, striking it. I looked, I thought about doing a sign, measured it out, what it says for the sign guidance, where the sign should go, but then I looked at it and the road's. Fairly new pavement on that road, I think twenty nineteen, it's black and it's dark. And I'm like, I don't think any better out here than a nice reflective double yellow line.
Okay.
And a couple days after it was done, the resident email me that I think that probably the same resident spoke to you.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, thank you, that was amazing.
Perfect.
Hopefully the W L lines guides the people a little bit more as they navigate those fields and the S curves.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll guide the law-abiding sane people. Occasionally, it's, occasionally I've seen them.
Good evening. Brought my book, because I know it was going to be a short meeting, I figured out length and I know. Those of you who don't know, we had our first meeting on the twenty-first with the RSU. In the public safety officials in town in reference to school safety and. That meeting went fairly well, and what we're doing right now is we, we've broken up into two separate groups. It's going to be the school group and then the public safety group. They're going to put their. Guidelines in place and their plans in place. We're going to put our plans in place on what needs to be done, then we're going to come, come together. And merge our plans together, so we're all operating off the same sheet of music, but they, they had a lot of work to do that didn't involve us. And we have a lot of work to do that doesn't involve them, so instead of wasting everybody's time. That would have no influence on the other, we just broke it up into two groups and that's the way we're handling it until our next meeting. And we're shooting for a come-together meeting the end of August before school starts, so.
Are you feeling optimistic that you will have the immediate access if we had an extreme emergency that?
As of right now, no. I still have no access to the schools right now, so. School's out, so it's not as much of an issue right now, but I, I have no doubt that come the beginning of the school year, I will have access to the buildings. I'm on the fair last week, had a pretty good turnout for the fair. We had officers working there most. Evenings, well, we had officers working every evening the fair was open. One without incident, we had a couple small kids jump in the gates, you know. No, no major crime up at the fair that night, that week, so everything went well. You got the, I passed out, thanks to Donna for doing this, flyers for National Light Out and we're, we're still scheduled for the same day, July twenty-sixth, six P M. Right in the parking lot with PD, hoping for a good turnout, bring the family. Everybody, bring your family. We're going to have some events there, some raffles. Fire Department's going to be there, Public Works is going to be there, winter ambulance is going to be there, we're going to have booth set up for the kids, so I'm hoping for a good turnout. Any suggestions on anything else? We're all open ears on that, more than area.
I wish it wasn't on Tuesday. I'd get there on Tuesday.
Bring the golf team over.
Yeah. Bring the whole league.
Buy another pack of hot dogs. We've got one month in on the new software, the RMS program, and. The guys are adjusting fairly well to that, two of them picked up on it real quickly, we've got one that's still struggling with the, the new program, but. That's to be expected.
What's RMS stand for?
Record, Record Management System. Yeah, we went from, we went from IMC to Stillman. And I'm, I've been working in Stillman since nineteen eighty-eight, I'm more familiar with it and to get information out to you. I can get it out a lot quicker with Stillman than I ever could trying to call people to help me get it out of IMC. So that's one of the reasons we switch. But that's going well. We are transmitting on the winter frequency now, we had them for two months. And that is going excellent. I mean, we've had no issues with radio coverage other than portable coverage from inside the new school, other than that. We haven't had any, any radio issues at all, so we're not. Got the radios in, the new radio is in all our cruisers now, there's only one that needs to be replaced and that'll be when Dana's new car comes in this fall. We'll have to have a new radio for that one, but that's built into the budget, so for the cruisers. It's going to be a lot safer for the officers with those radios from here going forward, and I appreciate you guys' effort to help me. Modernize the facility, cruisers and streamline things and put things in order. I appreciate it. Questions?
Can you go down to Cobbsey Boat Launch and get the parking straightened out?
Yeah, I just need someone to call me. I did get a, I did get an email complaint about a boat that has been parking down there overnight, I don't know if you've seen it. Wardens had a conversation with them, telling them they can't park their boat at the dock overnight and they disregarded it, so now they're going. From our boat launch to the East Winter Boat Launch and every night they switch it up.
So they're using it as their private dock?
Yes, yep.
Their private beach too.
That's hot spot.
Yep.
So the wardens would have enforcement authority over that?
Yes.
That'd be the first to complain too, if somebody cut their line and the boat floated away.
I'll read.
This is from Dan Roy, he can't be here this evening, he's ill. Says the fire department has been busy, last Friday crews responded to four calls, bringing our six-month tally to eighty calls total. Firefighters stood by Friday and Saturday evening at the fairgrounds for events with no incidents requiring our assistance. Tomorrow evening firefighters will be getting a tour and training at the solar array site on Ridge Road. And the beach party is on schedule for Saturday, but we are monitoring potential for rain. If needed, the postponement date will be Sunday, July third. We hope to make that call by Friday evening, fingers crossed. That's it. In the town office, we're, we're struggling with the, trying to get the audit done. And our new accounting firm is starting to take hold, they've been remoting into our systems and pulling a lot of reports from our payroll system and all that stuff, so they're. They're slowly getting on board, they think it'll be about a month before they can take our payroll over for us, so another, another, another payroll will get through. On our own. Thank you to Lori for trying to get that done for us, so very good.
Closing out the year.
Closing out the year tomorrow, so the town office will close at noon, it happened to work out well because the. Under the new law where when you get your driver's license, you're automatically enrolled in voter registration, there's a, there's a mandatory state training and it, they have, one of them happened to be tomorrow afternoon. So everybody but me will be up here in that training and I'll be, I'll be doing the year-end roll over in the afternoon in the town office, so. Timing kind of worked out well so that we didn't have to, you know, close for another afternoon sometime.
Dan, Dan mentioned how he was going to put out the information if. It'd be made out.
He didn't, but I assume it would be on Facebook because he has his own Facebook group on the end of the beach party.
Next is select board report.
I want to thank Harold for everything he's done for this town.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
All in faithful. Yeah, don't miss me too much.
I'm on speed dial.
I want to put a plug in for the cardboard canoe race that's happening at the Monmouth Beach Party, assuming the weather allows, on Saturday, which is at four o'clock.
They sink a little faster if it was raining probably.
Yeah, they do. They sink pretty quick.
The first year that we had this. Think Thomas Neal was a freshman and he and his cohorts got together, of course his dad's an engineer, so. And they created a very. Very solid cardboard boat that they went fishing with after they did the race. They went fishing in it.
Rusty.
So did Darling and Russ.
Yep, they. I don't know if they finished the race, but they certainly tried. They made an attempt.
They were going to use the boat for next year.
The one that, that Thomas and, and his fellow boaters created was very seaworthy. No, they used duct tape to cardboard.
Oh no, we had, we had accusations of malfeasance there and I did, I did the investigation. Was all duct tape, was real duct tape.
Nineteen eighty-five.
We also had a meeting of the Economic Development Committee. Last week, and it'll probably be our last one for the summer. We were fortunate to have Reagan tally the survey that was given out during the election and on Facebook. And, and do you have copies of that survey?
Of the, of the results? No, I don't. I, I just, I just have her email the other that she sent me, but I don't think it's got the, I don't know if she put the totals in there.
Well, maybe you could summarize what she's got to say about them.
Sure, I can do that. Read this the other day. They got about a hundred surveys back, both paper and online. Part of that survey, you guys all saw it, so I don't need to kind of explain how that worked. Generally, the motion was to create a TIF amendment that would include spending categories for recreational trails, certain environmental protection projects. Related to lakes, public water and public water extending to North Monmouth. A portion of cost for some equipment for the fire department and economic development and public access to lakes. It was discussed that since the business park concept did not receive a lot of support, nor does it have. Support amongst the committee members, is being recommended that that expenditure be removed from the allowable TIF projects. The plan for this amendment would be that it be voted on in November. Do you want me to, you want anything else?
I just wanted to describe the process a little bit. When you get a hundred people who all sort of weigh in. You are probably way beyond statistically significant, you know, conclusions. So it was good that we got that number of people, and of course, this is sort of, this is just the beginning and not the end. This is kind of the seed crystal for what happens next, which is for this select board to. Take a fresh look at the recommendations from the Economic Development Committee and consider making changes that would then have to go before the voters. Before it would actually take effect, so there would be a public hearing prior to that vote, so that we can hear from voters as well as to whether or not they think. The new direction of the TIF district is, is wise. The, the committee basically took the top, out of eleven options, took the top five, they seemed to be clustered together. Although there was one standout, and that was the recreational trails, which was far and above number one on the list. The other five or six seem to be all related to one another in terms of. The attention that, that, that folks wanted the TIF to be spending. Kind of focused on infrastructure for North Monmouth. Focused on potentially using some of the TIF money for fire department expenses. And then, and then lastly, kind of lake-related. Types of expenses, whether it's public access, economic development, or just preservation of the quality of lakes. And so we, we had a motion, we're making recommendations to this board, and I would hope that. Once we get through the next couple of meetings with the, the new folks on the board, that we could schedule a time maybe to, to talk about TIFs. And talk about how we might restructure it. Reagan has certainly agreed to put in some time. This summer with our attorney to do that.
Good. Anything else? No. I, I just, I had some questions about where different projects are. The, the search for the, the, search for the sewer line business up here. Which came up at, at the building committee meeting. And I don't know what, have you heard any more about what's going on there?
Last time you that Paul's drafting a letter that will. Turn, send to almighty waste about the sewer line, that's. He wanted to make sure he had all of his i's dotted and t's crossed, so I know that letter's in the works from, I think it was an email yesterday or today.
Yeah, Dawn called and she said the same thing, so I'm awaiting a draft from Paul that then we will put on town letterhead. So I, I'm not sure if Dawn is the one that's going to sign it or if they're looking for me to sign it, I don't know.
Looking for you to sign it since you signed the contract.
And, and then I'll, I'll send that to him. I think it's just something that Scott was requesting, so that he knew exactly what it was that they were requesting of him. Because my understanding is that he wants to do, he wants to do the digging.
Yes.
So.
And then the oil tanks out here that are.
Yeah. I think that it was in there to remove those eventually, but I think we have, what, two years to remove them?
Something like that, yeah.
So there's nothing, no timeline for?
Not that I'm aware of at this at this time. I don't know if it will be part of the construction or I'm not sure.
I think we'll put it back on the on the, we don't want to do a bunch of landscaping and then have to dig them up. So we'll make sure that that those tanks are removed before the landscaping, before the final landscape.
Because the longer you wait for the, more little be you'll have a nice area out here and then you have to dig it all up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The the North Monmouth Beach. Have you heard from?
I just heard this morning, actually. Yeah, I should have mentioned that. So Mary has a has a has a different feel on this than than my previous attorney. So she thinks that we, she doesn't think it's ideal for this year, but she said she wouldn't, she wouldn't cautious us. She would, she wouldn't say that we shouldn't do it this year, but she said next year, what we should do is that is that lease that the town signed years ago should be made a warrant article that makes it clear that the townsfolk want to sign at least a long-term lease to use that as a public beach. And basically through that process authorized in the lease, put the put the agreement that the town is making with the landowner that Public Works will mow it, so on and so forth. So she would like to see that on next year's warrant to make it clean, but she said because it is open to the public and it's being used as a as a public beach, basically, that she's not uncomfortable with moving forward this year, but just know that she would ask that we that you included in the warrant for next year to make it cleaner.
Does Tim Burden know?
Nope, I haven't had a chance to talk to him yet. Okay, I just have that information about one time today.
So where it is then putting a porta potty up there over there and taking care of the?
We can do whatever you all want me to set out there at this point.
Porta potty's there, but I didn't think we were going to do that this year. I didn't order one.
Yeah, we weren't gonna do anything there this year because I didn't think that it was it was legal for us to be spending money up there. But Mary has a different opinion than my my previous attorney, so we'll go with her because she's our lawyer.
Okay, I would think that.
And we can try to do whatever.
Yeah, I would think if we could do a porta potty, a trash can, and a mowing on occasion, that's not a huge investment in town resources.
Okay, with public works?
Yeah, it's what's been previously done, so.
Okay, yes.
Add it back in the schedule.
Okay, and as far as getting the porta potty?
I can certainly do that, Justin. No need me to.
Okay, that'd be great if you would.
If there doesn't happen to be any available, Joe, if there doesn't happen to be any available, which is good chance that could happen. Is there still one down at the Little League?
Good question. I'm not sure.
If there is, maybe you could.
In the past, we have done that.
Yeah. Moving it up there for.
I'll I'll call Nate and find out. Okay, I'll look into that tomorrow.
In fact, maybe instead of renting another one, we could just do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will call him.
Tim said there were quite a few people there. Last, I don't know when that was hot, like. And of course, they didn't have any any place to go. Fortified, that is. The Cop Dog and Dam situation. I had a call from a a lake resident who they're having their annual lake road meeting. They don't have any lake association, but they do have associations for different roads. So this guy is the was the head of it, Don Ham's boy. And he was wondering what I knew and I said, well, I I told him what I knew about, that there would probably be a copper dam built at some point, but I didn't know when. Or like, would the control gate there, whatever that be, would that be all rebuilt? And anything else that would go on there? I couldn't. Do you know anymore about?
No, we're still waiting for an estimate just to build the copper dam to do the necessary repairs. I I I'm doubtful that we have the money to even do that. So it's it's probably gonna be one of these things where there may have to be, you know, an article in November or or something, if you want to get it done sooner rather than later to, you know, to appropriate the necessary money to to fix that. But right now, I'm waiting on the contractor that met with the engineer down there to get us an estimate. But everything nowadays seems to take four times longer than it used to to get prices on things. And so I assume that's why it's taking so a little while.
It is a rebuild of the control?
We would love to do the whole thing, that that little that little box on there. I mean, I think if you pushed on it hard enough, you could knock it over. It's not, it's it's not in good shape. The the crank mechanism is very manual. It has a piece of wood in it to make sure that the track is touching the gears, like there's a wedged piece of wood because the whole thing isn't isn't level or straight. So if we are gonna do anything in there, it probably would be worth considering, you know, making some significant upgrades to the to the.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. We'll have to see how much it costs.
Okay, so I'll call him so he can tell the like group. I think it's this weekend, maybe. I got a a letter from MMA about the reissuing more ARPA funds.
Yep.
And do you know any more about that?
It's all been dispersed by the state, so it's sitting in our sitting in our checking account right now.
The second half.
The second half.
Second half.
Yep.
So it's not nothing new that's coming?
No.
Oh.
It's the other half of the four hundred and thirty-some-odd thousand that we were originally allocated.
Okay.
And which has already been?
Committed.
Committed.
And the transfer station stickers. Is there is there any word on what's going on there?
We have met internally, but I think the plan right now is is that we will, we will, we will begin issuing twenty twenty-three stickers in October so that people can get them on. So either when they're at the transfer station, they can pick them up, or we'll have them in the town office when they come in for various reasons, then we'll start putting them on their cars then, or they could start having them. So on January first, they can we can, we can start using those as the as the method to get by. Because otherwise, if we go on some type of a month thing, the stickers are gonna have to have months on them and then they're gonna be, you know, having to get really close to them to figure out if they're any good. You know, like your inspection sticker. It just didn't seem like that's gonna help if we're trying to make it less intrusive. Then it really should just be, they're orange, good enough, you know, like it's an orange sticker. Have that or blue or whatever. It happens to be that, yeah.
And today, for the first time, I noticed that the beach is a sticker that you put on your car, right, for the Monmouth?
I'm not aware of that.
You're not?
No, that Lisa would have that information.
Oh, it was, well, I saw it at Hattford, Monmouth Beach.
Didn't you do that when COVID happened and parents were bringing their kids? Didn't you have stickers then or something?
Yeah.
That might have been from then. Yeah.
Okay.
That first summer when we were only letting Monmouth residents, and I think that they did some sort of sticker thing then.
Yeah, they were good. Very noticeable. So nothing else. Okay, then public comment. Somebody on the TV. No public comment. Okay, then, Joe, you're up.
I I don't have a whole lot to report. I'm in limbo right now with, in the past, we've we've offered rec opportunities in the summer from basketball to baseball to soccer. But our our local high school coaches see that as an opportunity for them to make money for their particular programs, so they're doing it. And I'm guilty, I do it with my soccer team, too. It's the it's the our only way of fundraising for our programs. So we are offering programs for the kids. It's just not going through a rec department.
Is there anything wrong with that?
Pardon?
Anything wrong with doing it?
I don't I don't see anything wrong with it. We're still providing service to the kids. The numbers are good.
Yep.
Very good.
And and they would, they would pay anyway, right?
They would pay anyway.
Yeah.
So you're still gonna have a rec soccer program in the fall and a basketball rec program in the winter?
Fall, we offer rec K through six, a weekly clinic. Then we have four different travel teams that practice twice a week and play on Saturdays. And and I oversee that as well. Then we do something very similar with basketball. K through six, we use the school gyms, and we have travel teams that play. And they actually play on Saturdays and then also on Wednesdays. It becomes a logistic nightmare trying to find a gym. And then we also offer cheering, which has been very, very, very busy and successful. We, in the past, we've offered Nordic skiing and downhill skiing, but with COVID, that kind of fell apart. We're meeting again in July tenth to see what we're gonna provide this this fall and this winter. We haven't met for a couple of weeks. I had, I was ill, then I had a death in my family, and then Pat hurt her ankle. We haven't met for a while, so we'll start back up July tenth. And we also want to use this building as well to provide opportunities for adults. Adult classes, yoga, pottery, self-defense. You know, we're gonna brainstorm and try to figure out what we can offer and when we can offer it and who we could get to do it and how they would get compensated and all the all the logistics that go along with it.
I guess they have something that's pretty popular with the seniors. They have a cribbage tournament.
You know, we've talked about that, with coffees and donuts with card tables and an opportunity for adults to come in here during the winter months. You know, some of those things we're discussing as well.
Great. How's so?
Sorry, I was just gonna ask about the survey. I know you did one on Facebook, but.
And with the survey wasn't well attended. There were, we only had, I I put it on Facebook three different occasions. I only had twenty-nine responses.
Yeah, that's where I think that, you know, having something at voting, because you do get, and and it's the adults that, you know, are in there voting. So whether they're older people like my mom, she's gonna grab something and check it off rather than do something on Facebook, which she wouldn't be able to figure out. Sorry, Mom. But, um, you know, I think having something like that, like the Economic Development Committee did, it works out well because you'll get parents there that will say, oh, my kids want to do X, Y, and Z, or, you know, as a mom, I want to, you know, learn how to crochet or I want to learn how to do this. So, you know, I think that having something, you know, whether somebody can pick it up at the town office or put something at the town office that they're in there.
Where that is on the on the docket to discuss on the tenth, how we can reach more people.
Joe, I was gonna ask if how things are going with the level of cooperation with the RSU and access to gymnasiums?
I I think pretty good, to be honest.
Okay.
You didn't have any issues with using the gym, you know, having two quality gyms certainly helps in the wintertime.
Yep.
And the athletic fields, we've we've never had an issue with that.
Okay.
So I would say it's good.
I I visited my brother in Texas and the the rage down there is this thing called pickleball.
Yeah.
For seniors. Get some moving around. And I see the level of use that the tennis course gets over here. It's like next to nothing. And essentially, you take a tennis court divided into two and you get two pickleball courts.
They play that in the wintertime?
They do not. No, this would be a, this would be a three-season type of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be something to discuss with your crew.
I will look into it, yeah.
Because we've got.
That's a different, different height of a net.
It's about the same as a tennis net, but you gotta get it, you gotta buy the equipment to do it.
That's the equivalent.
I've heard that.
Paddles and, yeah, I mean, it's, it might be a couple hundred bucks of equipment. Yeah, it's like a wiffle ball.
Right.
And a paddle.
I have seen it played, yeah.
And a and a net that's like a tennis net, but.
Does the RSU own the tennis court?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So this is, they take care of it. They make sure that it's in good shape, possibly.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it might be something that Wade's interested in doing with the gym class that he might, you know,
Yeah.
look into repainting that to do with his gym kids, and then we could use it in the rec program.
Yeah, if there's, if there's a way to collaborate with the RSU on that in terms of, you know, logistics.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Do kids play pickleball?
They can. There's nothing stopping them, but this is, it's it's easier tennis. It's essentially, it's like ping pong only on a large scale. That's what it's like. So. Yeah, yeah. And so it's it's easier to do if you're if you're getting on age and, but it gets him, mom was eighty-three years old, mom was playing pickleball, moving around. It's good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so like, I'm not a very good tennis player. I mean, when I was young.
Yeah, okay. Well, you'd be a perfect candidate for pickleball.
As a young pickleballer.
Oh, yeah, you'd be, you'd be.
Because I was terrible at tennis.
You'd be a pickleball. You'd be a pickleball champion.
All right.
I will look into it.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have. I am gonna look into the purchasing of the building that we talked about. I'm gonna actually do that tomorrow.
So, Joe, just the the to close the loop, you've got your next meeting with your group on July ten.
Yeah.
Would it be possible for you to come report back to us at the next available select board meeting, just so we can keep tabs on what's going on?
Sure.
And it seems to me like in the budget, we put some extra resources in the rec rec budget for knowing that there was gonna be some here, something here, and also that we were looking at. I mean, this is kind of a response to the survey that we did two elections ago where people were asked, what would you like to see in terms of recreation? So do you recall?
Most of the increase in your budget was for this building, I think. It was for the, it was for them taking the ownership of this facility because it didn't have a budget.
Okay, but we do have some freedom to move some things around if we needed to.
Sure.
To allow you to to start some programs.
Right, I mean, the pickleball probably wouldn't be a big expense, but providing a pottery class or photography class or yoga class. That that could get a little costly.
Start startup. There's gonna be some startup costs. All right.
Figure out how it's gonna, maybe it will sustain itself. Who knows? How we do it.
Well, I think the other big thing you have to look at is how are people gonna register for this? And having a rec committee site that's in conjunction with the town website that people can go on and register for classes, pay for them, however that's gonna happen. And so you can say, okay, we've got ten people registered to learn how to, you know, throw pots. So out of that money, we're gonna be able to pay our teacher and then supplies. And, you know, because anytime you take a class like that, when I've done them in the past, especially for crafting things, you know, you're, you buy your supplies and then you pay for the class. So, you know, but I think that having a having a site that people are gonna be able to use, because I don't think that exists right now for the rec committees. because I don't think that exists right now for the rec committees.
Yes, it is. I mean, we do have access to the site, but it's not, it's nothing special.
So I am. Well, I'm just saying, but if there were classes on there, parents would register their kids on there for something their kids want to do or or or, you know, adults or whatever it may be. So, you know, I would, the one that comes to mind is Scarborough. They have a, you know, their huge rec program down there and after-school scout. Look at their website and see how they have it set up and what classes are available. And, you know, look at some of the other communities, not that we can be Scarborough, but.
That's a full-time.
Exactly, yes, but but if we're going to, you know, offer programs, look at how they have their website laid out and what what you can do with that and how they're working it. And then who knows, maybe at some point, you know, we will have the money to enough to have somebody that's running a rec program and an after-school program and things like that. We don't know. And I think that's one of the things that people wanted to be able to have some sort of recreation um year-round, not only for their kids but for themselves. So being able to register online and go into the town website and figuring out how you can do it, I think that's really important. And seeing, you know, what other towns offer. Paul, does Winthrop have, you know, a rec program like that where kids?
They find it out to the Y.
They farm, that's right, that's right, so. That's right. I forgot about that, but I think that, you know, that's yeah, but um, you know, there's, there's probably some other towns around here that, you know, Wayne might do something at at the Lad Rec Center and things like that, see how they have theirs laid out and how the people register and what they're offering. And and I think that's how you get some of your great ideas is to see, don't, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You can see how other people are doing it and take some ideas from that, so.
So after, after my meeting, I'll, I'll make an appointment to come in and share what we discussed.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
My own personal sentiment, just speaking for me, is I would rather spend the money that we're spending on a econom- economic development coordinator on a full-time rec person to head that department. I'd I'd rather see that fully funded than the economic development coordinator. I think we'd get more value out of that. It's just something to consider.
That's just, she's, her position is just kind of a, uh, I think it was supposed to be a six-month thing or?
Yeah, right now she's just kind of operating, because the committee is basically using her as support. So to get to get the tip amendments through and stuff like that.
And actually, the 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 amount of resources that we're expending just for the three or four hours a week that she's doing, I don't even know if it's that much. Uh, it's, it's nowhere near what the, you know, maximum contractual amount would have been. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a fraction of that.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next is warrant number twenty-six.
I handed that down. That's right in front of you.
Oh, yeah.
Third alarm media laptop and replacement TV for the center station, one thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars. Almighty waste, this is the portion of the committee. Uh, they've retained five thousand, but this is the rest of it, sixty-seven thousand one hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents. Admiral fire and safety uniforms for the chief here, he's he's passed a six-month probation, so he thought it was safe to buy clothes.
I thought that was your uniform.
In his hat, he just has his hat on though.
Atlantic construction dump truck repair, two thousand seven hundred ninety, central main power, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five. Stan Niles Plumbing and Heating, replacement fire department boiler, one thousand four dollars. Dennis Burke, gasoline, one thousand four hundred and fifty-two. Blue Rock Earthworks Material Transport, two thousand five hundred and fifty. K and B Builders, install the weather vane on Compton Hall, repair walls and install cabinets at the fire station, one thousand seven hundred thirty and eight thousand five hundred. Points Lawn and Garden, gravely lawnmower, this is the zero turn, twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Lucas striping, eight thousand one hundred and seventy-two. Mainline fence, these are the additional panels that were put around this building over here, three thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Main Technology Group, this is our new firm, our firewalls and switches that are being installed around town, five thousand four hundred and two dollars. Mandarin Library Automation, annual subscription for the library, one thousand and fifty dollars. Marina Cart Adult Ed Class B Training for one of our, to get a Class B training for one of our truck drivers, three thousand five hundred dollars. Monmouth Water Association, this is for the water meter problems we had in this building, one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. New England Vehicle Outfitters, two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer outfitting for the Police Department, six thousand five hundred and five dollars. Service Master Water Damage Restoration at the Fire Department, two thousand three hundred and sixty-six. Treasurer State Domain, both for motor vehicles, thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and four thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. And WB Mason Supplies for Compton Hall and the Library, one thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number twenty-six.
So the motion by Cat, second by Harold, to approve warrant number twenty-six. All those in favor? Thank you. And next is a, an executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six G labor negotiations.